Can we handle that? Okay, so let's, let's get to it. Welcome everyone in the gallery today for our council meeting. It's great to see real faces here and we'll get things started and we'll call this meeting to order. Do we still do roll call? I see everybody's here.
No, because you don't have to anymore.
Yeah, let's skip roll call. I see everybody that's here. There's no addendums or corrections to the agenda. Any disclosure of pecuniary interests under the Admissible Conflict of Interest Act with any of the items on our agenda today? Okay, seeing none. The first item that we have is approval and adoption of the minutes. We have a recommendation that the minutes of the public meeting under the Planning Act Committee of the whole meeting held March 30th, 2022 be adopted as circulated. Can I get a mover for that, please? Counselor Foster, second my counsel, Doesmore, any comments or questions about those minutes? All in favor? And that is passed. We're off to a good start. Item five, presentations and announcements. Firstly, we have our artist that is being spotlighted today, Sylvia Gelbreth, and I will welcome you to the podium to speak about your beautiful art.
Hello, everyone. I think I know pretty well everybody here, so keep my introduction short. I'm a professional photographer based in Fergus. Have done a lot of work for quite a few of you, but a lot of the time people are surprised when they see this kind of work from me because I do a lot of professional work, but I also do a lot of what we call personal work, the things that I really love to do, which involves me and a camera and typically nobody else. And a lot of the time, those are photographs that nobody really gets to see as well. So I'm always happy to have an opportunity like this to sort of dust off those prints and get them out where people can see them. And the collection you're looking at here is based on a number of photographs that I have created over the last five years or so. And everything you see here is from various Canadian locations, mostly really remote locations, places where there aren't many people around, places where weather and water has a huge impact on the landscape. One of them is actually from Bellewood, but the others are mostly Newfoundland. I won't tell you which ones from Bellewood, you can guess. Mostly Newfoundland, British Columbia, and Northern Ontario, specifically Georgian Bay. So when I'm out shooting this sort of thing, I'm always looking for sort of those layers of what's underneath what we consider a typical landscape. You know, if I say imagine a landscape, first thing that comes to mind, especially around here, is probably some sort of a rural scene, fields, trees, maybe a waterfall, a river, whatever. But when I think of a landscape, I look at what's underneath all that. And I try to delve below that surface. And I start thinking of things in terms of timelines. And it kind of brings you to the idea of the geology, the base of our landscapes. And that's what these photographs are about. So I'm looking at specifically rocks, because that's what's under the entire earth, if you really get into it. But, and I think about how, when we imagine rocks in particular, we think of them as never changing, never moving, nothing ever happens to a rock, right? But that's totally not true. It just happens in a very slow timeline. So a lot of the photographs here, the rocks in these photographs are easily 500 million years old or more. So it's a timeline that's totally out of our comprehension. So my idea behind creating this work is to make us slow down, stop rushing around. At least, this is what I experience both when I'm photographing them, but also when I come back and start reviewing the work and ultimately printing it, framing it and all that. It reminds me that there's a whole lot going on in the world that does not include humans. And I think it's a, pardon the pun, but it's a way of grounding myself and kind of telling me that there's this stability in the earth that is not dependent on us. So in a way, I find it to be a little reassuring too, especially over the last two years where we've been rushing around, we've been worried about our future, our family's future, the future of the earth, when you get into environmental issues and things. And I look at these photographs and I think, let's dial it back and remember that things happen as they happen and maybe stop trying to control everything and just chill out and let that 500 million years of things happen. So that's part of what I do. And I hope you enjoy the work. I still really like looking at them now and again. And it's just a way of taking, taking a deep breath and stepping back. So I should mention that Bev Cairns is the instigator for this art in public places through the Alora Arts Council. I know she wanted to be here today to kind of talk about that aspect of it, but she wasn't able to. But I'm sure you're all familiar with that program. But it's through the Arts Council, a way of bringing work out of our studios and into the public eye as well. And I do really want to thank her for arranging all this. And thank you, council, for letting me have my work out here and have someone else dust it once in a while instead.
Thanks very much, Sylvia. And thanks to Bev from the Arts Council as well for organizing this. So no, we really appreciate you having it here. Any questions, any comments from council? Counselor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Sylvia, I was just thinking, in your career in photographic arts, what's been the impact of the online world on photographic arts? TikTok and all these things?
I wouldn't say the online world specifically as much as the digital world. Okay? And I think, so I've been a photographer since, I hate to say how long, but because that'll kind of date me, but easily 35 years. And so I've, I've started with my hands in the chemicals in a darkroom, shot film forever, switched to digital. And I, I go with the flow. Right now, it's all high-end digital work. I've got scanners, printers, you name it, all of that stuff. But I also still work with alternate processes like creating emulsions out of plant juices, painting it on paper, creating photographs, old school, as in early 1800s. So personally, I've experienced pretty well every way of making a photograph possible. And I do know, and I have found that at one time, photography was treated more as a, something very specific, that certain individuals did, did it well. There was a bit of a mystery to it. It wasn't something everybody could do. And as a professional photographer, I found that people really respected what I did. If I shot a wedding, for example, I was given my space to work and everyone let me do my thing. So kind of back to your question, the biggest shift is not the online part of it, but the digital part of it, where suddenly everybody was creating photographs. It used to be that we believed photographs. A film-based image was very hard to manipulate. It could be done. But the general consensus was that a photograph was worth that thousand words and it was a document that was true, we could believe in. And that has totally switched now. So when anybody creates a photograph that might be completely unusual or captures sort of a moment that you can't even imagine happening, our assumption is that you must have done something to it. Even these photographs. So my way of creating these is to wait for the correct conditions. So most of these were done in pouring rain because it brings out the color, the texture. A nice blue sky July day, you won't find me out shooting because it's not my kind of weather. And if conditions aren't right, I keep going back over and over. But I find now, whether it's an online exhibition, or a workshop I'm teaching, or, you know, anyone looking at my work, the first question people ask is, so what did you do to that to make it look the way it did? And that's the common perception. So we've lost that trust in photography. I do it too. The storm we had over the weekend, sort of flipping through social media, and I'm looking at these photographs that come through. And my first thought is, there's no way that happened in nature. Maybe it did, but I instantly think, oh yeah, they've enhanced it somehow or done something to it. Professionally, with everyone running around with digital cameras, it has totally altered the professional photography world in that it's really reduced the value of photography. And it's taught people to accept lower quality images. So because they think that's all that's possible. So for those of us who are more old school and take the time to put the work on the quality of the image, it's easy. People will look at these and say to me, wow, how did you do that? These are just photographs. There's nothing different here than what I was doing 30 years ago. Same process. These are digital based, but my method is still the same as when I shot with film. So it's more in our perceptions of artwork in general, photography especially. So hopefully that was sort of a long answer to your question, but yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much, Sylvia. That's great and fascinating, the discussion that you're having. That's, that's really good. Thank you. Appreciate you letting us borrow these for a while.
Enjoy them.
Yes, we will. We will. Okay, the second item that we have on our agenda is a community delegation, Alora Environmental Centre. And we have Tony Ellis here to speak to us about the Tree Trust Program. Welcome, Tony. Good to have you here on our first day back.
Yes, I feel very honored. Thank you so much.
Just hit your mic, mic there. So thousands watching on TV, on YouTube can watch you.
Great. Oh, great. Thank you, whoever made that happen. My name is Tony Ellis, and I'm the Executive Director of Tree Trust. And I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about the program. And I have a specific request for you at the end of my short presentation. Tree Trust, as you mentioned, is a project of the Alora Environment Centre, which is a registered Canadian charity here that was established in Alora in 1993. So, oh, I'm so used to, okay, next, please. Thanks. There is growing awareness about the value and importance of trees. And if anybody's heard me talking about this, you know, this is my rallying cry. And it's not just me, it's across the board. And it's demonstrated, for example, by this bevy of books that have come out that are extolling the value and importance of trees in our community. And frankly, the municipality made the decision to hire an urban forest manager a couple of years ago. I think initially to worry about the Emerald Ashpor, but now clearly it's become much more than that. And that is reflective of how important we realize these urban trees are to our, in all kinds of ways. Next, please? Thanks. So here are some of the ways that trees are important to us. And, and I'd just like to underscore that these are trees, particularly in urban environment. And these are the trees that need help, right? So they are storing carbon, there's flowing stormwater. If you look at the rain on the weekend, when you see the water hitting the pavement versus hitting the ground, you can see how important the trees are for slowing stormwater rushing into the, into the river. Wildlife habitat, lots of birds, animals and so on live in the trees, shade. And in fact, the city of Toronto is really got their public health department in behind trees because of the importance trees provide in cancer prevention, skin cancer prevention. Real estate value, some stats say that a big tree adds $10,000 of value to your home property, just one big old tree. And then mental and social well-being, there's a whole philosophy now around forest bathing, going into the forest, physically feeling better, your pulse lowers, your stress level goes down. And certainly, we saw that a lot over the pandemic of people getting out of doors and really valuing our green spaces. Next, please? Thanks. And it's really understood now that the bigger the tree, the greater the benefit. And that's probably not surprising. There's more leaves, there's more wood in the trees storing the carbon, there's more habitat space. It's just the bigger the tree, the better. Next, please? And while we know that the bigger the trees, the better, we are losing our trees. And this is across the board everywhere. We're losing them from old age. We're losing them from years of neglect because for years and years, nobody even thought to take care of their big trees or their trees, period. We're having invasive species, Emerald Ashpor, as I mentioned a minute ago. We also have, we're worried now about the oak wilt that might be coming through. Any number of things. There are still some survivor elm trees that have made it through the Dutch elm disease, fortunately, but that we lost a lot of the elms from that. And then the pressures from development, urban development. So I think there's a lot of people, and I'm certainly one of them, that really worries about, will we see these big majestic trees that we've taken advantage of and taken for granted for years and years? Will we see the likes of them again? It's unclear. Between climate change, invasive species, and so on. So the big trees that we have are really important to hang on to. Ding. So over the years, you probably know, I said first, over the years, we've run the Neighbor Woods Tree Inventory Program, which you probably all know. We've been out looking at our trees, measuring them, identifying them, assessing their health. And one of the things that's very obvious is there are a number of big trees in our community who need some structural pruning, who need some work and are not getting it. But this was the tipping point. This was the thing that made us go, oh, jeepers, we have to do something. These were some four sugar maples that were in front of what was then Collins Barrow on County Road 18. Those little baby trees in the middle, we had actually planted because we knew one day those big trees would come down and we wanted to get the little ones established. But those trees came down, and in our opinion, they deserved to have been looked at to evaluate whether or not, in fact, whole-scale clearcut was the only option. And that's what tipped us over to say, okay, wait a second. These big majestic legacy trees need to be considered and looked at from a point of view, are there other things that we can do besides removal? And what can we do to keep them on the landscape longer? Ding. So we started Tree Trust. And we started in 2019 with the specific objective of preserving legacy trees. So this was our big event that we had to launch the program. This was in behind our MP, Mike Chong, Michael Chong, excuse me, is a beautiful sugar maple. And it's growing on the grounds of the Alora Community Centre. And so at that time, this was in June 2019, there were two, possibly even three arboriculture companies in the trees, bringing down the canopy, removing dead wood, looking at flaws that would affect the tree's long-term health. And so that was the first tree we did. And in conjunction with taking care of that big tree, we planted a few legacy little saplings that will one day take over when this big tree comes down. The model of Tree Trust is a simple one. Basically, we raise money to be able to hire professional arborists to preserve these selected trees. And we also, as I said earlier, plant small little trees to take over as their future carbon capture heroes. We don't take care of every tree, obviously. We take care of the trees that are determined to have structural defects but are still vigorous. So they've got good leaves on them, they're, they're growing, but they've got a structural flaw, whether it's a crack in it or a union that's going to break apart, those kinds of things. So we look at ways that the, the tree can structurally be improved with professional arboriculture care. Each legacy tree is a carbon storehouse. And there's various opinions about how much carbon is actually in a given old tree. We can calculate how much biomass is in a tree. And it's unclear if it's 50% of the biomass is carbon or 87% is carbon. Either way, it's a lot. We use a sort of an average of saying 10 tons of carbon is stored in a, in a big tree. And so obviously, anything we can do to help them stay on the landscape is that carbon that we're retaining. And when we started the program in 2019, storing carbon was a really helpful hook because at that time, lots and lots of people were flying. And lots and lots of people were feeling, quite frankly, guilty for flying, for the carbon footprint that flying creates. And so that gave us an idea for how we could raise money for Tree Trust. Ding. So we came up with this calculator, which is on our website. And it allows people to, in very short order, determine what's the carbon cost of flying, or driving, or heating your home. And it's a very simple calculator. There's two or three steps involved to get you the number that your carbon, that your particular activity has generated in terms of carbon. And then we have a suggested donation amount of $30. It works out to be $30 a ton. We don't call it a specific offset because that whole world is kind of frankly, a Wild West. So we, we try to avoid the word offset, even though that's the word that gets thrown around a lot. Instead, what we say is we try to say words like making up for or making amends for carbon. The tree that you can see there is an amazing red oak. And we did that tree. That was one of our Tree Trust trees that we did. And while it's on private property, it really affects the streetscape. So it was a really great one to be able to take care of. What we found during the pandemic, obviously, was without people flying around anymore, that cut off our revenue stream a bit. But what we found out was lots and lots of people really love and care about their big old trees. So they kept giving to us, which was wonderful. So our charitable donations dropped a bit, but not as much as you might imagine. Ding. So one of the big selling features of Tree Trust is that all of the donations stay in our community. So for example, if you offset through WestJet or Air Canada, you know what, where your money goes? I mean, it goes to good things presumably, but there's probably a third party in the middle of there. Whereas our money stays right here in our community. And we invite all of our donors to come out and see the trees that we're taking care of, thanks to locally generated donations. Ding. So we were excited because we found out lots of other communities really like this idea too. And these are the communities that we've expanded into so far. And we're continuing to grow. We're talking to a couple other communities adopting our model. So it's all falling under the Tree Trust umbrella. And each of these, we call our chapters. So if you go on our website, people have an opportunity to donate to their specific chapter. And we talked to some people, for example, who live elsewhere, they don't have a Tree Trust chapter in their community yet, but we invite them to consider, well, do you ever go to the Stratford Festival? Oh, wait a minute, do you ever come to the Alora Festival? You might want to donate to our own, one of these six chapters. So your money can get to work at the local level for those big trees too. Here are some of the sponsors that we've attracted. So in addition to our, our individual donations, from individual public donations, we have quite a lot of support, as you can see, from both foundations and also local businesses. And some of the chapters as well have their own local businesses who are supporting them. So our request today is kind of a simple one. We're hoping that council will consider supporting this program by offsetting the carbon produced for, by council and staff travel. Again, it is a made in Centre Wellington innovation. So we hope that you're proud that we started here and you, you want to demonstrate your pride by getting behind it. Ding. So what does that mean in terms of dollars and cents? As I said earlier, it's a fairly, I think, fairly modest contribution. So if you travel 200 kilometers, and again, on our calculator, it's easy to figure out how to do that, your donation is $1.20. So what we're finding now is that people are saying, well, how much did I travel last year? Typically, it's 20,000 kilometers. So you can, I can't remember what the math is, but Mr. Wilson, you can maybe tell us. But it's, it's, it's not a whole lot. And then again, air travel. And of course, everybody knows flying is really, we should not be flying, but let's face it, we are. And so a flight to Montreal and back is $10.80. So again, it's pretty modest numbers. So in addition to frankly, supporting the urban forest here in CW, you'll be also showing leadership. And this would be, if you get behind this, we would certainly be something that we would take out to our chapters and encourage them to talk to their own councils and say, hey, Centre Wellington did it for the home base of the program. Would you consider doing it as well? And in addition, I mean, it might be something that you want to encourage staff to do even for vacations and holidays and so on and so on. It's really not a big, it's not a big commitment financially. And it, it's really important. Climate, we are in a climate crisis here. And it is a thing you can do. And you can go see the fruits of your donation at work. Ding. I just wanted to close by pointing out, this is a tree that we did this Earth Day, April 22nd. And this is a spectacular silver maple that's growing in the Catholic cemetery in Salem. There were five arborists working in this tree. And it was quite, I don't know, Mayor Linton, if you would agree, but honestly, you couldn't look at this site without feeling kind of a bit choked up about all these people working to help this tree. That's providing solace and comfort to people who visit the cemetery. And it's frankly, a real landmark on the, on the, in the, on the grounds. This particular tree was fittingly sponsored by Giddy Funeral Homes, which has been a good model for us. We've had Rotary Club, who sponsored a couple of trees as well. And somebody else did too. Oh, oh, yes. And somebody whose dad died, he offered in lieu of flowers, if you would like to donate to Tree Trust instead. So we'll actually be taking care of a tree in behind the Knox Presbyterian Mans on Friday. It's a big, again, beautiful sugar maple. And thanks to his generosity and all of those who were supporting Tree Trust rather than sending flowers, that tree will be able to be preserved too. And believe me, the homeowner, Reverend Clark, is thrilled that that tree will be preserved. So I think that, ding, I think that's the end of what I have to say. But I would welcome any questions that you have.
Thanks very much, Tony. And I so appreciate all your, your commitment to our urban forestry here. It's been years and years and years. Your dedication is, is really important and we really appreciate it. That, that, that saving that one tree in the cemetery, it was, it was really quite fascinating to see five individuals up at the top of these trees, cutting away some of these branches to make that tree healthier. It was, it was a fascinating, it's a fascinating program. And it was so good to see the kids there, singing their songs and all generations. So it was doing real, real good work for some of our big trees. So that's, that's great to see this program going. So I'll ask questions, comments from council at this point. Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Through you to Tony. Couple of questions, comments. I'm just wondering, I've had a number of residents contact me about celebration trees. And looking into it, it looks like we don't have any spaces currently for further celebration trees. Have you considered reaching out to the township to ask if they can redirect people's inquiries to your organization as an alternative to celebration trees, that people could fund that, as you were mentioning about the Knox Church tree? And also reaching out to the various funeral homes in the area, because a number of them offer something like a Tree Trust, where you can pay money to plant a tree. Perhaps you could have your group added to that list as an alternative. The other thing I'm wondering is, from the township perspective, having driven back from Ottawa yesterday and witnessed the devastation on number seven, and seeing all these large trees that have come down, would it be in our interest from a liability insurance perspective to have a regular program of maintaining these large trees to ensure that we're checking to make sure that if there's any pruning that needs to happen to prevent tree branches falling down, that's part of a preventative maintenance program that will hopefully reduce some of our liability insurance costs and also be supporting Tree Trust? So I'm just throwing that out as a possible consideration.
If I can just respond to your point about the funeral homes, we have, Scott Giddy has changed or added us to his funeral home website, which is pretty great. And we did get a call from somebody who wanted to get on the line for, get in line for a tree in a park through the new celebration tree model. And she felt that she didn't want to wait two years. And so I did mention Tree Trust to her. And so they are And so they are going to save a Catawba. She's contributing to saving a Catawba on the Arts Centre ground, so thank you, that's a good idea. We don't work on, we haven't, we work chiefly on the trees that are either on public property for people who can't take care of the trees, because it is quite costly, or park trees. We're not doing street trees. I think that was a decision made at one point by staff.
And just to clarify, I think, the program that Council McCray is talking about, I think we have something that's already set up for that. If Pat, if, I think it goes through Matt, or does it go through Infrastructure Services? Let me, or do you work together? So your answer, just to confirm, your answer might be a tag-team answer.
So we do have a tree pruning program, where we have the municipality broken up into sections, and we try to get to each section, one section a year, and so eventually, after eight years, we've done them and we do it again. So it's a tree pruning program, and that's managed by Matt Atlanta. So that is the public trees in our area. You may have different for street trees.
Yep. So yeah, so we kind of work with Matt, Matthew Atlanta, our urban forester, to assist with the maintenance, with the maintenance pruning where applicable, so, and removals as well. So we'll contract out through Matt, the larger removals, like larger tree removals, but kind of smaller ones, we'll look after ourselves. So it's a bit of a teamwork approach.
Councilor Dunsmar?
Yeah, my question would be for Colin, just based on that. So when we have a project where a sewer is going in or a road is going in, do you get Matthew involved in that project?
Through Mayor Linton, yeah, as early as possible. So as soon as, like, early, early in the design phase, we're bringing Matt out to the project site, and he's doing like a tree health assessment within the project area. So we get some insights into the health and the well-being of the trees within the project area. So yeah, that's a report that he prepares, and we usually sit down and use that information to inform part of the design process.
Any other questions for Tony? Can, is it, does somebody want to move, give any kind of direction to staff to look into this program, to see if we can cost it out?
Sure. So I would ask staff to look into it and cost it out, based on, we're looking at just the, the ask today was just for the travel of council members and the expenses of their traveling, is that what you were asking?
Well, the more, the better.
Okay.
Council would be great, staff.
So why don't we, why don't we put it to council and staff, and any travel that we do for the township, that we should look at offsetting the cost of the carbon footprint.
So you're moving staff to review that?
Yeah.
Does anyone want to second that?
Sorry. I believe, Tony, you mentioned the cost to maintain one tree was $1,800 approximately?
It really, it varies, but that could be, yes.
Instead of trying to collect the number of kilometers that council and staff do, could we just agree to give $1,800 or $2,400 per year towards Tree Trust to maintain a tree?
Friendly?
Actually, that's a little more in a friendly amendment, because that's a call. What I wanted staff to do is to look at it, see what our travel expense, it may vary well. When you put council and staff together, come to more than that, but I'd like you to look at that first, so we get a dollar figure that we're looking at.
And I imagine that in your motion, you're giving staff some latitude to look into different options like?
Absolutely.
You're seconding that?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? And that is carried. Thanks very much, Tony, and again.
So do I hear back from you, or what's the next step for me?
The next step will be for staff to come back to council for something, and that will be communicated out to folks.
Okay, that's great. And I brought some little cards, if anybody's interested, can I, I'll leave them here, and maybe you could pass them around?
For sure.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to delegations, we have Astrid Claus, the planning consultant, and Steve Wright from Wrighthaven Homes to talk about the draft plan of condominium, and I will invite Astrid to the podium. Welcome, Astrid.
Good afternoon. So my name's Astrid Claus. I'm a planning consultant here on behalf of Wrighthaven Homes. Stephen Wright is also available, as is Angela Crech from GM Blue Plan, in case there are any questions from council. Essentially, I'm here in support of the recommendation on, in Section 7.1 of your agenda, to send this to the county with conditions, with appropriate conditions. And I would mention that we've been working with staff on this application for a couple of years, and the number of units have reduced from 16 down to 13 in the revised submission. And what that allowed us to do was shift the road and the lots further to the south to save some trees at the back of the property, and also shift the road over to be able to provide greater opportunities to save trees along the westerly boundary of the property. So we certainly listened at the public meeting, and we've made some adjustments to the plan to address those concerns. And the environmental work that was prepared by Abudan Associates has been peer-reviewed by NRSI and the Grand River Conservation Authority and found to be acceptable. And Wrighthaven has, in addition, voluntarily agreed to limit lots 1 to 6 to be bungalows only, even though the zoning would allow two-story units to be constructed. And that's something that is, has become a condition of this approval. So I'd just conclude by saying that we've reviewed the conditions that are being recommended, and they're acceptable to Wrighthaven, and we are available to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Astrid. Any questions of clarification from council, recognizing that this is the next item on our agenda, and there'll be a staff report? Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Astrid, for your report. Can you tell me, describe to me the roadway? Will it, I'm wanting to know, will there be sidewalks? Will there be boulevards? Will the road be a full urban standard road, or will the road be narrower and things like that?
Sure. So it is not a municipal road, it's a private condominium road, and so it will be, while the asphalt width will essentially be the standard that's required for two-way traffic, there will not be on-street parking, but there will be some parking spaces provided. And it will be to an urban standard. Now Angela can maybe answer more detailed questions about it, but it's a private condominium road versus a municipal road.
Follow on, Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Will there, will there be sidewalks and curbs?
No sidewalk, but curbs. Yep.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much, Astrid.
Thank you.
Second delegation that we have is Dawn Valerie, on Item 7.2, the Highway Commercial Zoning Amendment. Dawn is the chair of our Healthy Growth Advisory Committee, and he just wants to speak to this item that is coming up on our agenda. Welcome, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, we have a, Healthy Growth Committee has a subcommittee, Policy and Zoning, and this is where this application has come from. And we need to have a public meeting as part of it, and that's what we're asking for today. And it's, you've got all the documentation, you can see what it's like. And it's really to increase more housing, more rental accommodations, and this is maybe one of many ways that we can do it. Okay? Anybody got any questions to that?
Any questions for Dawn, as far as the discussions that the committee had? We'll be getting into this a little more detail in a minute, but, yeah, so Dunsmar?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mayor Linton. Dawn, was there any discussion at the committee level? I see that you were talking about County Road 7 and Highway 6, but we're not, we're not making any changes to the downtown cores at this time.
No, no, it's just, it's the areas that are shown here. Strictly highway commercial, C2 zone.
Okay.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with downtown.
Good, thank you.
Either downtown.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. Thanks very much, Dawn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our consideration of reports, 7.1, we have a draft plan of condominium, and we have a report from our managing director of planning and development, Brett Salmon. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. As Astrid mentioned, this is a decision report or a recommendation report for a draft plan of vacant land condominium. As she mentioned, the application has had a public meeting, it's been through consultation. Through that consultation, the applicant has amended the draft plan, which were down from 16 to 13 units as a result of addressing the environmental comments and some of the neighborhood comments. So in addition to that, the Common Element Road was shifted over to the east a little bit to provide a little bit more room for a buffer with the residents immediately adjacent to the west. So with that, we're ready to recommend that the township council support the draft approval of this vacant land condominium, and the conditions are in the report, that's Attachment Number 3, and, which is in Page 22 of the agenda package. These are the normal conditions that we would apply to a development such as this. A couple of comparable examples are, there's two, south of Bellside Avenue, Highland Ridge, which is off Elkin Court, which is a private vacant land condo with a similar road with no sidewalk and a narrow road width. And another one that's called Heritage Lane off Bellside Avenue is a very similar, and Heritage Square off James Street would be another example of this kind of development, where we have low-density, single-detached dwellings on a private road. It does enable, you know, it's, I think, a superior form of development to severing it into a whole bunch of individual lots. It enables the creation, avoids the creation of a municipal road that we don't really, the township doesn't have a need for a small road like this with only 13 units on it. Thanks.
Thanks, Brett. Questions from council on this application? Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, I've, I've had a number of discussions with many constituents, many of whom are concerned about this application. Comments have been raised repeatedly about the narrowness of the road, the lack of sidewalk, the lack of on-street parking, or minimal provided. I actually drove through Elkin Ridge this morning, as well as Heritage Square, and the end result, Brett, is the streetscape is extremely tight, and I was just wondering, the road won't be full urban standard. Can you help me understand why we would want to consider that when the road's going to be narrower, it won't have sidewalks, it won't have boulevards, and limited on-street parking?
Well, in, you know, in a, in a private development such as this, the road width is, you know, tailored to meet the fire requirement, which are a minimum of 6 meters. You can see from the plan that's provided, they've had, they have provided some bumpouts where the road allowance is wider to accommodate some on-street parking. But also with this form of development, there, with the bungalow houses, the units are wider, and each house will have two driveways, wide driveways, so they can accommodate two cars on each lot. And with only 13 units, we haven't felt that on-street parking on the whole thing is required in the other developments that have happened in the past. There is, of course, an adjacent public road where parking is available, but within the confines of a smaller development like this, we've not designed the road width to accommodate parking. But if you, in the case of where it is wide, widened out for the parking, it actually is wider than a municipal road allowance, or like the municipal street curb-to-curb would be, because we require it to be 6 for the fire truck plus 2.4 for the width of the parking stalls, and our normal street pavement is 8 meters wide. So the width of the road itself, curb-to-curb, is very similar to a municipal street. What you don't have is all the extra width for the services in, that make a road allowance itself normally would be 20 meters or 18 meters. So the pavement width is very similar to what we would build on a municipal street.
Any other comments from council? Councilor McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Through you, just want to make the comment that one of the things I like about this is the fact that it's better utilization of underutilized urban land, it's preventing us from moving out into more rural land. I also like the fact that the developer has made efforts to address residents' concerns and is also increasing our supply of bungalows. I've heard from a number of seniors in the community who want to downsize, and we don't have sufficient bungalows for them to purchase. So I think this is a, something that is very needed in our community.
Anything else from council? Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Brett, I'd also like to ask about the Side Road 19 and Highway 6 interchange. I've had a number of constituents express concern about turning out onto the highway. They've expressed concern that where, we used to have one house on this location, now you'll have 13 homes, and I appreciate that the number's been reduced. Nevertheless, we continue to build without increasing the highway infrastructure to get people in and out. I wonder, is there a way we can address concerns of folks with respect to traffic, Side Road 19 and Highway 6? It's very tight there. People are actually detouring through the fresh coal because of inability to turn out onto the highway. How will we address that, Brett, as we continue to build?
Thanks. I'll give a brief answer, and then I'm going to turn it over to Colin, whose team has been investigating this issue. When it comes to this particular development, I think at the public meeting, we had this one and another one on PD line, both had their public meeting at the same night, and that issue did arise. And we've heard, again, from a person on Side Road 19, of course, repeatedly about the concern with that particular intersection. For the purposes of this application, with it only being 13 units, our engineers at Triton advised that we wouldn't normally ask for a traffic impact study for a development of this size with only 13 units. So there wasn't a specific requirement for a traffic impact study for this development, but infrastructure and Triton are kind of looking at the big picture of that whole area and that intersection of Side Road 19 and Highway 6, kind of as a separate entity. And there'll be recommendations coming forward at a future date, and I'll let Colin elaborate.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Councilor Foster, so through, through Mayor Linton. So we're, we've had some discussions with MTO. As council's aware, the connecting link limits end at, just, just south of Side Road 19. So we're kind of in a joint jurisdiction area with the township's jurisdiction going up to essentially the new Wild Wings store there, and, and then from there, north of that is MTO. So that's MTO's jurisdictions to the north from that point. So, so we've had a number of conversations with MTO's staff. They've done some turning movement studies, they've been on-site as well in that area, just kind of observing. They've, they've checked the, the speed limits. It's, it's 80 to 70 as you're coming into town, and so they've, they've had a look at the posted speed limits, run those through the Transportation Association of Canada, kind of posted speed limit check, the same one that the township uses, to, to ensure that the posted speed limit is correct. So they've, they've been doing some checks, they're not recommending any changes at this time. But that being said, there is more growth happening in this area, so it's something that, that they've committed to continue to monitor as, as the growth occurs, to see if anything changes. But at this time, there's no, no changes recommended to that intersection.
Okay, I'm going to read the recommendation. The council of the Township of Center Wellington advised the County of Wellington that it is no objection to the approval of the draft plan of condominium 23CD-2023 as revised, subject to the conditions set out in Attachment Number 3 to Report PLN 2022-14. Mover for that, please? Councilor McQuain, second to by. Councilor McCray, all in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Thanks very much, Brett. Moving on to Highway Commercial Zoning Amendment township-wide, and we have a report from Marianna, our senior planner. Welcome, Marianna.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Through you.
Through you. The report before you is seeking council endorsement for staff to schedule a statutory public meeting to bring forth draft changes to the C two highway commercial zones in the township, in the comprehensive zoning bylaw. This would impact all C two zones township-wide and is being initiated after considerable work by the Healthy Growth Committee. So thank you to the committee members as well on this. So in October of twenty-twenty-one, council will recall that council endorsed recommendations from the Healthy Growth Committee to pursue changes to the C two zones to assist with increasing the supply of attainable housing. This is also in keeping with council's strategic direction to ensure that the housing mix provides adequate attainable housing, particularly in areas with ground floor commercial, to ensure a mix of uses that promotes a walkable community, which helps maintain small-town character. The committee's policy and zoning subcommittee has been working on detailed regulation changes to remove these barriers, to allow more flexibility on these sites with a name to increase the number of residential units. The changes will also incorporate new regulations to help ensure that compatibility issues are addressed, particularly where, particularly where they abut low-density residential zones. The C two highway commercial zones are typically located, if you can see on the maps there and in your reports, typically along major arterial roads and highways. So County Road Seven in Alora Salem and Highway Six in Fergus, as well as County Road Eighteen. So there's a few sites there that are already zoned highway commercial. And these generally reflect uses that serve the traveling public, restaurants, gas stations, smaller format strip plazas. And they're typically underutilized sites, which is why, one of the reasons we targeted these areas for ease of implementation. The changes would not impact, as mentioned, the central business district downtown areas as shown in the maps. So it's basically avoiding those areas and looking at what we'd call so-called low-hanging fruit so that we could look at increasing the supply of housing more quickly. And also after hearing from some local developers and examining other municipalities' highway commercial areas, we proposed several changes that'll go through in the chart shortly. So this is the zooming in, I guess, there we go, in Fergus North. These are the highway commercial areas in the north end of Fergus. And then the next one is in the south end. So as you can see, there's quite a range of properties that are available and that have significantly underutilized sites, large expanses of parking. And we feel that those are areas that could be targeted for redevelopment. Just to clarify, the C two zones already do permit residential uses, but the way it's worded right now is that they're permitted above ground-level commercial. So there hasn't been a lot of take-up. There are a few sites that have been developed this way, but there has not been a lot. And we feel that there is a lot more opportunity here. So what we're proposing, if you go to the next slide, please, is generally to, we reviewed these sites themselves in terms of their size firstly. So recognizing some of them are smaller than what our minimum zoning bylaw would allow to be developed. So we've lowered that to seven hundred square meters from a thousand to reflect also what the R four zoning is that currently would allow development of an apartment building. So this chart just outlines the sort of the current zoning in the left column and the proposed in the right, and then some additional comments, which is also in your report. So we've also lowered the minimum lot frontage that's required from thirty down to twenty to capture a few more properties that would be able to be redeveloped. And then what we've done here is the minimum front yard is going to stay the same at three meters, but we will also be, are proposing to include a two-meter step back for anything above a third story. So you'll notice that our maximum building height, we're proposing to increase from the currently permitted three stories, which is the maximum, up to eighteen meters, up to five stories, or no more than five stories. So what that's going to do is allow a greater number of residential units to be included. And this zoning, just to clarify again, would only apply to those properties where mixed use is proposed. So where mixed use is proposed, you could go up to five stories. However, along the front, so the street frontage, we're adding a two-meter step back for the facade, everything above the third story. So the first three stories could be sort of the street wall and then everything above that. So a fourth or fifth story would have to be set back two meters for each floor above the third. And what this, so this is also proposed to happen along the rear and side yards as well. So there would be a step back for the upper floors so that it increases the amount of sunlight on the street, on adjacent properties, minimizes the impact of massing from the public realm and from around the building so that the building is stepped and there's no significant five-story walls anywhere. So the only other change I'd like to highlight is the buffer strip. Right now, there's only a one-point-five-meter buffer strip required and that's sort of a landscape space between properties. And that we are proposing to increase to two-point-five meters where it abuts land zone for residential or institutional. And that's the, it's not the setback of the building. This is the actual buffer that is allowing landscape, landscaping to be included and to be able to thrive in a larger space so that it allows trees as well. And the other thing we're proposing is to eliminate or prohibit certain uses that are generally permitted in a C two zone. And that's just to reduce nuisances resulting from the mix of the use with residential. So certain uses that we felt were not compatible with residential, either within the same building or on the same property. And that would include things like service stations, automobile service and sales and such. So that's it for the sort of highlights of the, what's proposed in the bylaw. And that's also included in your report and the detailed bylaws in your report. Next slide, please. So just a reminder of the definition of attainable housing that the Healthy Growth Committee has endorsed and that was developed through consultation or work with the, you know, sorry, University of Guelph students that worked on the project with us. And it's housing that costs up to thirty percent of a household's grossing, gross income with the household income ranging from eighty to one-hundred-and-twenty percent of local median income. Beyond financial considerations, the housing should accommodate all people through all stages of life as needs and means change while being both available and sustainable. And again, what we heard from some of the local developers is that if we are to be promoting an age-friendly community and allowing people of all, all ages to be living in a building, there's a big push on now for elevators to be included in buildings. And that's typically not cost-effective for a developer unless it's at least four stories in height. So one of the reasons that we're doing this as well is to be able to make it more age-friendly and to be able to include elevators in such buildings and lower the cost per unit. So why we're targeting highway commercial areas again is that it increases the housing supply on a much larger scale because the properties themselves are larger and there are fewer impacts in these areas. There aren't as many, so mixed use is anticipated in these areas. There are fewer impacts to adjacent residential. And there are also no heritage properties basically impacted or part of the C two zones. So it also addresses land needs for larger mixed-use developments. So such developments tend to be larger sites and have large parking requirements as well. Access to major arterial roads along future transit corridors. A wide range of supportive uses is also typically included in such sites because they have retail and service commercial uses already there onsite for the day-to-day needs of residents. There's opportunities for shared parking among uses at different times of date between residents and retail or service commercial. There is already servicing capacity available to support intensification, typically sidewalks, curbs, urban cross-section of the roadways, and water and sewer. It also encourages a main street feel. So the more residential units we can include in some of these properties, and many of them are currently one-story strip plaza-type developments. So where you can encourage residential above these properties, you'll have a lot more residents, obviously pedestrians, and it contributes to the main street feel and also encourages pedestrian and cycle-friendly environment in the street. As I mentioned previously, these are underutilized sites with a lot of empty space and vast parking areas. So they are prime candidates for redevelopment and also close to amenities and to major transit, sorry, transportation corridors. Ease of short-term implementation. We've taken a few months to, to put this together. And we, if we can get to a public meeting shortly, then we can get these regulations in effect sooner rather than later. Details also, just to note, the details would be implemented through the site plan process. So that doesn't go away. These are just zoning regulations. They're sort of the basis of, so that developers are aware of what they need to use to develop these properties. However, they would also need to apply for site plan approval. And that's where we would review many details, site access, design, circulation within the property, the amount of parking. And we also have design, our urban design guidelines that speak to highway commercial areas and what the intent is from a design guideline standpoint. We are going to, we are also proposing to look at those design guidelines for the highway commercial zones so that we can provide some updates specifically targeting sites where residential is being added. Next slide? That's okay. So I just included this, a few graphics here so that you have an idea, a better idea of what the aim is and what this might look and feel like. This is just a graphic about a livable mid-rise neighborhood and the, the goals or aims of what is trying to be established here. In, it's, mid-rise is relative. I would say for our community, we're talking about three to five stories. In other communities, as you can see in the top-left box there, it's usually five to eleven. So again, we're talking about a much smaller scale than typical cities. But it's still, the other goals are still relevant. So walkable neighborhoods at a comfortable pedestrian, human scale. The buildings establish, sorry, they blend into established and family-friendly neighborhoods, including near schools and parks. They are, shorter height and setbacks mean that the mid-rise buildings allow more sun to shine on the street, as I mentioned. They help animate the street because there's still commercial being proposed at grade up front along the street. So, and I forgot to mention that previously in the chart, but what the goal is, is to have, still maintain commercial uses at grade and in any of the front buildings, so within nine meters of the street line. However, any buildings that are set to the back, if they are greater than thirty meters from the front property line, they can have all residential units. So they don't need to have commercial at grade. So it's just allowing some more flexibility. They can still have commercial at grade if there is a market for it, but it allows more flexibility to add residential units at the rear of these commercial front-facing properties. And also stepping back the upper floors allows, again, greater sunlight, a less perception of massing, but also it creates a friendlier streetscape and provides terracing options as well so that you can have people out on their balconies. And then the, the commercial uses at grade, they also obviously help support the local economy. So I think that's it for that. And next slide? These are just some examples. This is an example of step backs on upper stories, particularly at the sides where they might be abutting lower-density residential and along the street. So it's not just a street wall, five-story street wall that you'd be looking at, but more two to three stories along the street. And then the upper floors would be set back, allowing for some terracing there. Next slide? So these are just some examples I've taken from other municipalities. This is a large redevelopment site in Gravenhurst that was just done by Skyline. And it is a commercial, large highway commercial site, but proposed to have the residential mixed in and provides a lot of opportunity for amenity space and for adding green space at the back around the residential units, but a mix of uses proposed overall and greatly increasing the supply of housing on such sites. Next slide? This is an example of the residential units that were, that are proposed at the back of the site. So they also have amenities built in. Next slide? And then the next few slides are just some examples, recognizing that most of these are probably five to six stories, but as I mentioned, we would only be looking at up to five stories. But some examples there are just of the setbacks and the terracing and what it could look like at the street level and also from a distance. Another example there. So you could have a building at the front like that on a, a wide, busy roadway where it's three stories and then any residential units are set back. And then the building at the back could be completely residential. And that's it. So just to conclude then, the Healthy Growth Committee at its last meeting, which was on May fourth, reviewed and endorsed the proposed bylaw changes and is recommending that council direct staff to schedule a public meeting to present and propose, to present the proposed bylaw and to solicit input before finalizing a bylaw amendment for council's consideration and approval. So this is not coming to today for any kind of approval. It's just to ask that council direct staff to set a public meeting so that we could bring forward a draft for public input and discussion. And we would use all the input received, both from the public, from council and agencies, and bring forward a final bylaw for council's consideration. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks very much, Marianna. And thanks for that clarification at the end there because I was going to do the same thing. Two things I wanted to mention before I turn it over to council. Firstly, we're only talking about highway commercials. A couple of those pictures talked about, looked like it was downtowns. We're talking about highway commercial here. So want to make sure that we, that was clear with council here. The second thing is I just wanted to commend both Brett and Marianna for working with the, with the Healthy Growth Advisory Committee. And we had a lot of really in-depth working sessions to, to go through what you see in front of you, lots of discussion, lots of back and forth. And Brett and Marianna provided significant support and advice and, and helped the process go so that we had got a lot of really good work done by this, this great citizen-led committee. So I really appreciate your work in, in collaborating that, make sure, made sure we had enough structure to the meetings, but not too much where we allowed for some really good input. So it was a really good process to go through. So appreciate, appreciate your leadership there. Over to council, members of council, some questions, comments? Councilor Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marianna, for an excellent report. I, I quite like the idea of having a public meeting. I also like the idea of the C two area as a place for attainable housing, in part because it helps conserve our heritage conservation districts and our heritage areas. I, I'm just reading the recommendation here and, and as it's written, it, it doesn't actually speak to attainable housing in the recommendation. So I'd like to propose a very friendly amendment that the recommendation, right after the phrase "C two highway commercial zones," I'd like to change that to a comma and add the following. To provide for attainable housing and that staff report back to council on all public feedback received and subsequently to present a final report and zoning amendment back to council for review. I can give you a copy of that, Carrie. But the rationale, Mayor, is the recommendation does not explicitly refer to attainable housing as the purpose of the public meeting. So it's just a housekeeping item to make the recommendation more clear and to state with certainty what the goal of the public meeting would be, to gather input from the public on a zoning matter with respect to attainable housing.
Okay, so we'll, we'll make sure we come back to that wording. We'll go around the room and if, if other members of council want to speak to that proposed amendment, then that's, then that's good. But we'll make sure we get back to that before we leave this, this agenda item. Anything else from council? Councilor McCray?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Through you, to Marianna. Just more question. I seem to recall in some of my reading that the old idea of the corner store with the residential above to a municipality generates more revenue from a property tax perspective than, say, a large commercial mall with these big, huge sprawling parking lots. So by going this route, we're also looking at a future income increase for the community as well? Am I correct in that?
Thank you, through you. Not sure of the statistics of that, but it does make sense if you Not sure of the statistics of that, but it does make sense if you have residents on site who would be frequenting those commercial uses, then it would, it would definitely increase the economy or the economic viability of that store that's there, the commercial uses. So yes, it would supposedly, I think, would increase that.
Councilman McCray, follow on?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sort of thinking, looking at that Skyline example where we see they're building a separate residential building in part of what used to be the parking lot. Residential building is going to be worth more value to the municipality in terms of property taxes than just that piece of parking lot that was sitting there before. That's sort of where I'm thinking.
Yes, sorry. Yes, clarification, yes, it would be.
Councilman McQueen?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I want to say I've been pretty vocal about building communities instead of single-family homes for a long time. And so this, to me, is a, is a great solution. And, and as Bob said, it does help preserve our heritage areas as well. So I think it's a, it's a great proposal. I just had a question about, and, and maybe it's getting into too much detail before we go to public meeting, but one of the line items, for instance, in there, and, and there were a couple of others that I could refer to, but it says, retail store with a gross floor area of 300 square meters. Less than that is only if, if it's being grandfathered. And I'm just curious about that because it seems to me like smaller retail store boutique type places are, this is the ideal solution or location for some of those. So I'm curious about that one in particular, but there were a couple of others as well.
The, the clause about the, the floor area is a legacy of what's in our current zoning bylaw. And it's because of current township and county official plan policies that in retail areas or in highway commercial areas, there's not a significant support for retail uses, except for convenience purposes or large format. Because our official plan is based on the idea that sort of the, the smaller retailers should be downtown. I think that's a trend that's changing, that you're correct. In the future, we want to see more of those small retailers in those districts where we're trying to get people living there at the same time. So for now, because of what's in, in the township and the county OP, we kind of have to live with that. But as we go forward, I suspect that will change and will reduce the size of that retail. It's becoming more common to allow the retail uses where people live and not to concentrate it all in a downtown core.
Councilman McQueen?
Thanks, Mayor. So would this not be the ideal time to make that change to the zoning bylaw then?
I think that kind of change will also require amendments to the official plan, which we hadn't contemplated at this point, both at ours and the county's.
Anything else from council? Okay, so I'm going to read an amended, we don't have a recommendation on the floor, so I'm going to read the amended recommendation, see if we, if we can get agreement.
No, you're going to read the, the proposed amendment, vote on the proposed amendment, and then if it fails, then you go back to your motion.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to read the amended version and then we'll take it from there.
So this is the motion that you're looking at, that the following be added to the staff recommendation?
Okay. And then we have to go back to the top one? Why can't I do it all in one?
Because this is not a friendly amendment. This is actually an amendment. You need to vote on the amendment. Whether it passes or fails determines whether you go back or, it determines that you add it to or not add it to.
All right. All right. You're the clerk.
Well, we're, we're following the procedural bylaw with, with amendments now. This is not.
Okay, okay. We're following the rules now, apparently. Okay, so I'll read the amendment first and then we'll go back and, and read the first one. So the, the following be added to the staff recommendation to provide for attainable housing and that staff report back to the council on the feedback received from the public. So that's the amended version. Can, and moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilman McCray. All in favor of the amended part?
You did miss this last sentence.
What's the difference between a final report and a report back from, to council? Oh, I see, I see.
That was what was proposed.
So can I just pretend I didn't say anything and just do this again?
Just pretend you didn't carry it?
Okay.
And read, read it again.
Okay. Nothing happened there. We're rewinding. That the following be added to staff recommendation to provide for attainable housing and that staff report back to council on all feedback received from the public and that staff present a final report and a bylaw amendment for review by council. Moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilman McCray. Councilman McQueen, all in favor? That's carried. And now we go back to the first part, that the council of the Township of San Antonio directs planning staff to hold a public meeting concerning a township-initiated zoning bylaw amendment for C2 highway commercial zones. Moved by Councilor Dunsmore, seconded by Councilman McCray. All in favor? And that's carried. Everything's carried. Okay, thank you very much, Maryanna. Thanks Brett for that. Thank you, Dawn, for coming to speak to us today. Thanks Steve for, he's also part of the Healthy Growth Committee, so thanks for being here today. And thanks to the whole committee. They put a lot of time and effort into, into getting what you saw today. So appreciate, appreciate all their volunteer hours that they spent on it. Moving on to seven point, let's take a break. Let's take a five-minute break and we'll get back here at 2:22. Okay, we'll get back at it here. We're on 7.3 subdivision agreement, Plan 23T 15003. And we have a report from our managing director of planning and development, Brett Salmon. Welcome again, Brett.
Thank you, Mayor Linton. This is for subdivision that is more commonly called the Youngblood subdivision, draft Plan 23T 15003. It was approved by LPAT on July 25th of 2018 and issued an order giving it approval on January 8th of 2019. The plan has between 213 and 336 units, as well as blocks for storm water management, active and passive parkland, trail connections, and serving cor, service. and serving corridors. So in order to ensure that all the draft approval conditions are met, we use a subdivision agreement. And we've completed a subdivision agreement for this development, which is substantially the same as the agreement that's already come to council, I think in 2020, for the adjacent Haylock subdivision. And the access, of course, to this development is through Haylock. So all of the roads and services that have been built for the Haylock development extend into the Youngblood property. So the conditions are substantially the same as is the subdivision agreement itself. So initially, Mr. Youngblood's looking at servicing Phase 1. Phase 1 has approximately 250 units that are 38 single-detached dwellings and 212 multi-res. And then there's another 51 single-detached dwellings in Phase 2. And this agreement would provide for Phase 2 servicing to continue with the approval of the Managing Director of Infrastructure after Phase 1 was complete. It's really just 50 more units, so that's it.
Thanks very much Brett. Questions from council? Counselor McCray?
Just a comment. I like the fact that included in the agreement is provision for termites if discovered on the property. It's nice to see.
You say the Termites might not like it? Oh, I see. Recommendation of the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington authorized the mayor and clerk to execute subdivision agreement between the corporation and the owners of draft plan subdivision 23T-15003, Youngblood. Move for that, please. Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McCray. All in favor? And that is carried. 7.4, Single Source Hoffer Park, Accessible and Universal Washroom. That's a good news story. I'll turn it over to Adam.
Thank you very much Mayor Linton. And through you, this report provides a follow-up or reintroduction to a previous closed session report, provides recommendations, and seeks council endorsement to enter into a funding agreement to accelerate capital project works for the Hoffer Park enhancements that were previously identified in the 10-year capital forecast earmarked as a 2023 project. And this enables an opportunity to take advantage of a previously unidentified funding opportunity provided through the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario under the Tourism Relief Fund. To take advantage of this contribution of just north of $208,000, staff are required to have the project works completed within the 2022 calendar year. This project has been previously identified in the long-term capital plan and 100% tax-funded. Staff are recommending funding the township's portion of the project cost in 2022 from the General Capital Reserve to an upset limit of $63,900 to take advantage of this funding opportunity. Staff is further seeking council authorization for single-source procurement award for the washroom unit to Urban Blue to facilitate completion of the project within the proposed timeline. Should council have any further questions specific to this project, I would kindly defer to the Managing Director of Community Services for further comment.
Thanks very much Adam. Any comments, questions from council? Counselor McCray?
Thank you Mayor Linton. Through you, I just want to commend staff for discovering and pursuing and winning this grant. Thank you very much. I think it's well needed in the community.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you Mayor. In my previous career with the government of Canada, I love that word non-repayable contribution. So I guess Pat, Mike, I just want to be clear, this is a grant and not a loan. So we don't have to service this funding.
This is a grant and not a loan.
Thanks for that clarification. Counselor Van Looyen?
Thanks. So this washing unit, is it one of those you buy incomplete and they drop it off?
Through you Mayor Linton, yes. It's built on site at the manufacturer, and then they bring it in on a truck with a crane, and we prepare the site, and then it gets put there, and then they install all the details for the washing.
Counselor Van Looyen?
Thanks. And I know we may not do all self-cleaning units, but will we look at these in the future as well? I think in the past, we've spoken about these onsite. They can sometimes build them more affordable in-house and deliver it. I've seen them at parks, GRCA parks, and that is bring them in and set them down. And then one quick question, the self-cleaning, is it like a spray, or is it like being in a big boudoir?
Our staff actually traveled to the closest location to see this unit in Ajax, and the floor has sprayers on it, and it's all a spray, but not from the ceiling, just onto the floor, onto the units, onto the sink, and then big dryers come out and the floor is heated. That's how it dries and runs down to the drain. So I wouldn't want to sit there while it was happening. But it takes three minutes to go through its cleaning cycle. So it's pretty slick.
I'll read the recommendation of the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington, direct staff to accelerate completion of the works associated with the Hoffer Park enhancement from the 2023 budget to the 2022 budget, and that council endorses and direct staff to enter into a contribution agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Southern Ontario under the Tourism Relief Fund by way of borrowing bylaw. And that council authorized a single-source procurement award to Urban Blue for the acquisition and installation of an accessible and universal self-cleaning washroom at Hoffer Park. Moved by Counselor McElwain, seconded by Counselor Dunsmore. All in favor? And that is carried. That's good news. Thank you to the federal government on behalf of all the taxpayers of Centre Wellington for paying for this. 7.5, Temporary Extension of Liquor License, Grand River Raceway. A report from our deputy municipal clerk, Lisa. Anything you wanted to add to that report, Lisa? You seem surprised when I said your name there.
Well, no, I don't have anything to add, but can I answer any questions?
Okay. Any questions for our deputy municipal clerk on this agreement? Okay, I'll read the recommendation. The Council of the Township of Centre Wellington has no objection to the extension of the proposed extended licensed area at the Grand River Raceway as outlined in their letter dated April 14th, 2022, with respect to the industry day event scheduled for Monday, August 1st, 2022, and that council of the Township of Centre Wellington has no objection to the extension of the proposed extended licensed area at the Grand River Raceway as outlined in their letter dated April 14th, 2022, with respect to the Grove Youth Wellness Hub fundraising concert scheduled for July 2nd, 2022. Moved by Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McElwain. All in favor? And that is carried. 7.6, the CW Neighborhood Grant Recommendations. And we have our Communications and Strategic Initiative Specialist, Kendra here. Welcome Kendra.
Good afternoon Mayor Linton and members of council. I'm excited to be bringing this forward. It started in January of 2021, and we're finally here to bring forward five of these community grants. So we opened it up on March 15th until April 22nd, and the grant was promoted through various ways, the radio, newspaper, the website, and social media. We were able to receive 18 applications. By going through them though, and the ineligible taking those out, we came up with 15 that we could bring forward, or sorry, 13. So we've outlined that in the report. We brought all of them to CSAC, and they came up with the top five that they chose to receive $1,000 each. It was very difficult for the committee because all of these requests were very well thought out. These neighborhood groups came together and put forward some really great ideas for their neighborhood. But again, we were only able to put forward five to council. So we tried to look at it geographically and came up with the Bellwood Street Social Event, the Inverhaugh Barbecue, the Storybrooke Park Canada Day Party, and that's in Fergus, the CW Community Fun Day, which is Bissell Park, and the Alora Meadows Neighborhood Party. The reason we chose two in Alora, the one that is here in Bissell Park, it was more of like a community event, bringing together all of, you know, Fergus and Alora and Bellwood. So we just thought that was a nice fit as a fifth one. So trying to bring together the most people that we could.
Great. Thanks for that Kendra. And I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Dunsmore, since he sits on the committee for any comments that he has.
Yeah, thank you. Through you Mayor Linton. The committee had a robust discussion about all of the grants that came forward, and they were really thrilled with all of them. And it was noted that if you look at the report, on September 7th, council put aside $31,148 into the reserve. The committee has asked me if I would bring a motion forward to council, to have council consider funding all of them, which would be a total of $12,900. They would occur throughout different weekends throughout the year. They've got their dates attached to them. But they thought it was a great way to get people out and back into the community. And they were very pleased with all the ideas they had. So I would like to make the motion that we increase the funding from $5,000 to $12,900, based on the fact that we have the $31,000 set aside.
Counselor McCray? Can you put your mic on and second it?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Other comments from council before, I'm going to call that one to question. Counselor Foster?
Thanks Mayor. And to be clear Neil, then the total expense is just under $13,000.
Yep, $12,900. 90, sorry. Yep. Don't forget the 90.
Counselor Van Looyen?
Can we have some clarity as to exactly which area the funds are coming from? Like which, that we fund it from? Which account, reserve?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll let Dan answer that one.
Yeah, thank you. Through Mayor Linton, as part of the 2022 budget process, there was excess funds from the Community Impact Grant process that were not given out to the community. And there was a recommendation through council to allocate the remaining funds, which was $31,148 from that Community Impact Grant process, to a Centre Wellington Neighborhood Communities Reserve to be used for this intent.
Any other questions about that? I do have a question for staff. Moving from five to the 13, is there any concerns that staff will be able to handle the assistance and the support provided to all those groups?
Through you Mayor Linton. I think it will be a little tedious, just making sure that everyone's on track. But I think in looking at these, there wasn't a significant amount of, you know, like road closures or anything like that. I think these neighborhoods are self-sufficient. I think some of them have really thought out what they're going to do. I think there'll be some guidance in terms of insurance and things of that nature, but I don't think for this year it'll be out of the scope to assist them.
And just a follow-up, who on staff is on the hook for providing that support?
Through you Mayor Linton. I've done most of the legwork. However, we've had Dorothy Smith that has helped me up to date. So it'll be myself, and then I can have our digital media associate help as well, Hannah, and then we can look to staff to see if we need any other support as they come in.
Any other comments from council? Okay, I will read the modified recommendation. You guys are making it fun for my first day back here. Okay, I'm going to read the modified recommendation as I heard it, that the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington directs staff to proceed with awarding $12,990 to all qualified applications. I think that does the trick. Okay, period.
As part of the CW Neighborhood Grant.
As part of the CW Neighborhood Grant process.
Yes.
Is that good?
Yeah, I think so.
Moved by Counselor Dunsmore. Oh, we got that already. Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McCray. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you Kendra for all your work, and thanks for volunteering to do more. Moving to 7.7, Parking Bylaw Amendments. Report from John Gaddai, our manager of Public Works. Welcome John.
Thank you Mayor Linton. Counsel, very briefly, just to say, this is a report to have our parking bylaw amended, coming from really four areas. One, the parking strategy that was approved from the CAO's report at a previous meeting. Second, adding new subdivision restrictions that are part of the approved parking plans of those subdivisions. And then housekeeping items, which includes some feedback from our parking enforcement contractor from last year, but also just some miscellaneous minor changes throughout the year, and tidying up some clarification on some streets. Thank you.
Thanks John. Questions from council? Counselor McElwain? Counselor McElwain, just hit your button there.
Sorry, John, you're probably not going to be surprised, I'm going to ask about the parking up on Hall's Drive. And can we change that? Because the changes have really cut it down to almost zero parking left for the residents of Hall's Drive. And I, you know, I'm hoping that we can change it back to the way it used to be versus add to the problem.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor Linton. So what Counselor McElwain is referring to is we added, in addition to what was identified in the subdivision parking plan, we added restrictions on the inside of two curves on Hall's Drive. That was to address some concerns about, there is some construction traffic going on in that neighborhood, which we've tried to work with the home builder to minimize that as much as possible. But also for street maintenance, getting our vehicles around those curves is quite tight. So in the parking plans, that inside of the curve was not identified as having no parking signs, but on all of our subdivision parking plans, there's never parking spaces identified on those types of curves. So in spite of the fact that it was permitted to date or up until recently, it's still not an area where we would say parking should be permitted, if that addresses your question.
Counselor McElwain, following?
I guess the issue I see, John, is the fact that up until a year ago, the parking was on the other side of the street, where they had significantly more parking, and it was moved to the inside of the street and cut down on the parking. And now you cut more parking by knocking it off the curves. So there is very little visitor parking left on that street. So I'm suggesting that it be moved back to the outside of the street instead of the inside of the street to begin with, as parking used to be.
So through you, Mayor Linton, I suppose that's something we could consider. The, I'm not sure why, the history, obviously before my time, that the way it's signed, no parking on the outside, matches the approved subdivision plan. So that's why it was changed to that. What the history in that first couple of years of subdivision is, I'm not sure. But so assuming my esteemed director here is not going to overrule me, that's something we could look at to see if there's an alternative to, an acceptable alternative that addresses the inventory, but also the operating concerns for that, for that street.
Yeah, Colin?
Yep. Yeah, through Mayor Linton. So yeah, I think it's a safety issue that we're trying to address, just with the snowplows, trying to get around that corner, and the vehicles parking on that curve. It's very, very tight, not allowing enough space for the plow with the wing to get around there safely. So I think with that one, maybe we can go back and just do a count on the number of parking spaces in that area, and make sure that we can kind of maximize parking, but also address the safety issue around that curve. I think that's something that we can take back and have a look at and report back to council on that one.
Counselor McElwain?
Thanks Mayor. I think historically, it was on the other side of the street, but got changed when the new subdivision site plan was brought in, correct? And that's, I mean, the residents who have been there for 20 years are the ones who are saying, why can't we go back to the way we used to be, where there was a lot more parking, and where we had room for visitor parking? So that's why I'm suggesting that it be moved to the other side of the street, because then you didn't have the safety concern. then you didn't have the safety concerns of parking on the inside corner. So that's, that's, I mean, if the residents coming to me with this, I would never have thought of it myself. I mean, this is residents' questions, not mine.
So staff will take that back and take a look at the area? Okay. I have a recommendation of the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington authorize the mayor and municipal clerk to execute a bylaw to amend by law 5000-05 as amended, a bylaw to regulate the parking and stopping of vehicles on highways, public parking lots, and in some instances, private property within the township of Centre Wellington. Okay, let me get a moment, second, then I'll ask for more questions. Move by Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McElwain. Any further questions, comments? Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Through you, I have several questions. The first one relates to Carlton Place. It was a little difficult trying to understand the measurements from one curb to the next, but I'm assuming what we're doing is having most parking on the north side of Carlton Place, but I'm questioning between Metcalf Street and the start of the foundry building, Wedding Chapel, why we can't have parking on that north side of the street? It looks like we're excluding parking there, so it's the parking.
Our, through you, Mayor Linton, our intention was to more or less reflect what's there currently. Colin, do you have?
Yeah, so, yeah, so with the Little Folks Lot, 30 Carlton Place, going to be transferred to, well, Pearl's owned it for about four or five years now, but it's becoming their private parking lot as of July 1. And so the new, the changes to the Carlton Place reflect that change. So what we've proposed here is on-street parking, essentially on the north, the north side, along kind of the parking lot within the road allowance. We've got a few spaces on the south side, kind of between the ice cream shop and the corner. There's, I think, a couple of spaces there that are reflected in the bylaw, as well as parking on the north side, and then there's a couple of spaces on the south side, too, that have kind of always been there, so we formalized those within the bylaw as well. So I think we've captured them, some of the measurements, right? You know, we don't want, we don't want a section blocked in front of the access to the pedestrian bridge. So I think the one that you're referring to, Counselor McCray, is that section there on the north side, where we don't want anyone parked in front of the access to the pedestrian bridge. So we've deemed that as no parking.
So, okay, so the, if I'm walking down towards the pedestrian bridge, between that section of the street and Metcalf, do we allow parking on the north side of the street?
Yes, yeah.
We do?
So we will, so it'll be changing there, so we're, these amendments are reflecting the future condition with essentially the Pearl Parking Lot being effectively fenced. I think they're going to use like an armor stone to kind of isolate their lot, but at the same time, we still have the opportunity to do on-street parking along their property line.
So we won't use that?
So we, yeah, we still get, I think it's about four or five on-street parking spaces on the north side between the pedestrian bridge access and Metcalf.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. My next question. Let's see, this would be page 148 of 193, David Street West, Haylock Avenue to Murray I couldn't find a David Street there, but I found a Davis Street, so I'm wondering if you mean Davis Street as opposed to David Street? Or are you meaning Cutting Drive? It's within the Haylock properties. I think it's Davis Street?
Okay, so then, yeah, that would be a typo then.
Yeah, that should read Davis.
Okay, and then same thing on page 150 of 193. Again, there's a reference to David Street. I think you, do you mean Driscoll or Davis Street in that section? Is it supposed to be Driscoll Street to Davis Street?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's within the new Haylock subdivision, so they had some...
There is both Davis and Driscoll in that subdivision.
Yep. But you're showing Murray Drive outside David Street to Davis Street, and I'm thinking it should maybe be Driscoll to Davis Street?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that in a bit more detail. I think Murray Drive...
Yeah.
I think it's just typos.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
And, yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Okay, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks very much, John and Colin. Moving on to 7.8, appointments to the Grove Memorial Community Hospital. I will read the recommendation that the Council of the Township of Centre Wellington confirmed the appointment of the following members to the Grove's Memorial Community Hospital Board of Directors. Midora Giles, three-year term expiring at the annual meeting in 2025. Nicole Lotus, Pam, three-year term expiring at annual meeting in 2025. Richard David, three-year term expiring annual meeting in 2025. Shanahan Kevin, two-year term expiring at the annual meeting in 2024. McGregor Craig, two-year term expiring at the annual meeting in 2024. Move for that, please. Counselor Dunsmore, seconded by Counselor McElwain. Any questions about those? Just again, part of our requirement under the Grove's Act. All in favor? And that is carried. We, Section 8, we have five different information items. We have the capital project status as of March 31, 2022. We have minutes from the Economic Development Task Force. From April 7, we have minutes from the Community Services Advisory Committee. From April 6, we have minutes from the Healthy Growth Advisory Committee. From April 6, and we have the committee of the whole tracking list. Any questions, comments on any of those information items? Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mayor Linton. Through you, related to the analysis of capital projects, item number 78, pavement management 2022. Does that involve the Salem roads paving some of those streets?
Yeah, go ahead, Colin.
Yep, through Mayor Linton. So yeah, so we've just closed the tender on the 2022 pavement management project, so we will be bringing forward a report in less than a week for that, recommending that award. So right now, the scope does include paving or chip-sealing certain roads within Salem. But we'll have more information on that when we report to council on Monday.
Anything else from council on these? Counselor McElwain?
Sorry, just hit your, yeah. Sorry. In the tracking list, I was just curious, for the inclusion and diversity education and strategy, I see that the staff training has completed or is completing this month. What's the next step, and what's the schedule for that?
Yeah, Dan?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and through Mayor Linton. So we did complete part of the staff training in May. We have some more training. We have a blanket exercise with the Karios Company in June, where staff will do some indigenous reconciliation training. Next steps, there's a committee of staff that are working with the COJO Institute on a draft terms of reference for the advisory committee. So that is underway, where staff is looking at various options for an advisory committee terms of reference right now. So that's more or less the next step, and then we'll be bringing forward that to this council for review in the upcoming months.
Anything else from council from the information items? Last, motion to adjourn. Counselor Van Loon, seconded by Counselor Dunsmore. All in favor? And we are adjourned. Have a good rest of the day, and we'll be back here Monday for council meeting.
Tomorrow night?
Well, and Monday. See you tomorrow night.
Six P.M.
At 6:00 P.M.